My name is Brendan Gardner. I'm the Chief of Operations for Anzo County Schools. And this is our opportunity to share with you about our redistricting plan for Dixon High School, some of Dixon High School, and give you an opportunity to provide some feedback to us as well as we consider our options for dealing with the capacity issues that we have here at Dixon High School. I want to start by saying, I know this is not easy for anybody. For someone who moved around a lot as a child, changed schools quite frequently, I know it's difficult. We don't take this lightly. We know how it can affect our students. That's why we're giving so much lead time. That's why we're here to talk to you, to hear from you, since it's your children will be the ones that will be affected the most. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about where we are, why we're doing this, how this process works, kind of go over the options that we are looking at, and then give you an opportunity to share some feedback with you for us to consider as we finalize our options for redistricting Dixon High School. Kind of start with Dixon High School and where we are now. Not this facility, but the first part of Dixon High School was originally built in 1967. And since then, it has expanded steadily. We've added and added and added. The most recent addition was 2008. It was the Arts and Sciences Building. That, and then the annexation of what was left of Dixon Middle School after it was demolished, raised the capacity of Dixon High School to 957. That's how many students that brick and mortar this building, this group of buildings was meant to hold. The Dixon population, at the two-month ADM, I'll explain that in just a second, was 1,159. So as you can see, we have more students here than this building was meant to hold. Now, second-month ADM, ADM is Average Daily Membership. It's how many students during the second month of school, on average, were registered here at Dixon High School. We use the second-month ADM because it is typically our highest number. So it allows us to plan most effectively. I will say that the population has dipped some, as we would expect, and it is currently below 1,100. But that is still significantly above where Dixon High School is supposed to be at this So we have options when we want to deal with this. And one of the most responsible things we can do, you know, we want to be responsible with the public funds. That's your money that we spend. So we have to be responsible with that. And when we have nearby districts that have room to accept some of our students, we have to look in that direction before we can consider new construction, because new construction is extremely expensive. And I realize it's something that we have to do. But there have to be other fixes before we move into that. And for right now, Southwest, which is the next closest high school, does have room. That building was, can now hold 1,016. Its second-month ADM was 711. It is a little bit under 700 at this point. So they do have some room to accept some of our students. And that's what we're looking at. So when we start looking at who, when we want to do redistricting, how does that process look? First thing I did was we go to the school board and we say, "Look, this is the options we have. We have this issue at Dixon High School with capacity, and we need to address it, and here's how we'd like to do it. We'd like to consider redistricting." After that, we begin to research our options. We look at student population forecasts. We work with partners at NC State, and they provide these forecasts, 10-year population forecast for our schools. We look at the local population growth, and then, you live down here, so you know this place is growing exponentially. Transportation, efficiency in student travel times, that's a big piece of it. How long will a student be on the bus? You know, a lot of people look and say, "Well, I'm closer to this school." But when you ride a bus around, and you have to stop and wind through neighborhoods, you realize it takes a lot longer than it would if I was just driving my car to that school. So we have to look at our transportation and how efficiently we can run those buses and get our kids to school, and minimize the time they have to ride on a bus, and also the capacity of our buildings, which is determined by the number of classrooms that we have. Once we've done that, we work with NC State to get some maps together, to share with the Board as options, which is where we are now. There are the options that have been posted on our website. There are options here. There are options I'm going to go over in a little more detail here in a moment. After that, we accept public comments, and that's why we're here tonight, because the Board wants to hear from you. They're very interested in what our community has to say. It's very important to them. So we have two scenarios that we are looking at currently for Dixon High School students. This red line right here represents the current Dixon High School boundary. Everyone below that red line right now goes to Dixon High School, or is supposed to go to Dixon High School. What is shaded in purple is the first proposed new district line. So anyone, sorry, anyone within this purple zone then would now go to Southwest High School. Southwest High School is right here in yellow, and down here is Dixon High School in red. This does present a lot of transportation problems in these districts. When you look here, this is all federal land. It's split. Our buses can't go across there. So, you know, we have students who live here, and to go to Dixon, they have to travel all the way through here. They can't just cut through. To give you a better look at where this is, all of these follow parcel lines, property lines. These are all parcel lines right here, and then through here, it is all rural farmland. We just cut a line through there. If it starts to get developed, we could address that. But right now, it's just, and it's just all fields. So these all follow property lines through here, and then this is Southwest Creek. The other option that we are looking at kind of incorporates more of the northern central section of what is now Dixon High School's district. Again, everything below this red line is Dixon High School. And what is in purple is what we are proposing for option number two for the new Southwest District. It kind of follows here. This is Dawson Cabin Road, follows along there, and then this starts to follow, again, parcels once it hits Harris Creek Road. So those are the two options that we are currently considering. Once we have collected your feedback and shared that, the Board will take a look at those two scenarios, and they will vote on the one that they believe, or, you know, they could potentially say neither. We're leaving district lines where they are. I mean, it is up to the Board. But they will create new attendance zones, and it's important to note that those, these new attendance zones won't go into effect until 24, 25. So if you have a junior this year, this won't affect them at all. If you have a sophomore, it probably won't affect them, because typically, the Board has allowed those that are seniors to stay, as long as they can provide their own transportation. So if you have a sophomore right now, they'll be a senior in 24, 25. They'll have the option of staying right here at Dixon High School. A couple of other things. Both of these scenarios move approximately 200 students. So it will bring Dixon High School under capacity, with a little bit more room to grow as we plan moving forward for our facilities, and it will get Dixon, Southwest High School closer to more optimal efficiency. A big sticking point here is Southwest Middle School is also full. So in the interest of transparency, at this time, we won't be able to move the middle school district as well. We just don't have the room. Southwest Middle School can hold 518 students, and right now, they have 519. So that is going to be a problem. So we will have some students that would go potentially Southwest Elementary, Dixon Middle, Southwest High School. I mean, that is a possibility. And again, just to remember that any potential redistricting of Dixon and Southwest, just remember, again, 24, 25. It's not next year, not any of the elementary schools, not the middle school, just Dixon High School. And what I'd like to do now is open the floor for you. If you feel like you need a microphone, there is one over there, but I really, I welcome your comments. This is the real reason we're here tonight, is to hear from you, not from me. I just wanted to give you a background and just kind of explain our scenarios. So I would love to hear your questions, your concerns. I may not have a lot of answers for you right now, because I don't know what questions you're going to ask. But I will, if I don't have an answer right now, we're going to get that to you. Any comments you have, any feedback you have, is going to go to the Board for their consideration. So any questions at all you may have, I'd love to hear them. I'd love to be able to help you out. Yes, ma'am?
So are you considering moving?
Okay.
And buying our house because my daughter would do it?
Okay. So where would your house be?
Harris Creek Road.
Harris Creek Road?
Yeah.
So you're on Harris Creek, like Harris Creek Loop right here?
No, no, Harris.
Oh, Harris Creek Road, okay, down here.
So I would drive him, he has a middle school. My younger kid is at Dawson Elementary, so one next year and one after.
Gotcha.
But I would drive him to the bus with me, he had to get out of the car.
Right.
So he would drive, which is fine for us, but I...
So what grade is your son in?
He's a freshman, probably eight, nine, ten.
Okay.
But he, I would move closer to his son if I was going to be there. He's already friends, he's already moved in.
Yes, ma'am.
Literally, it's going to be a problem for him, but I guess my issue is, is I know that you guys are all supposed to stay in the same neighborhood.
Well, not us.
No, no, no. If not, if you're adding neighborhood, that's more or less, you guys are, I would be more transportation-wise. And so my recommendation would be to bus those kids to Southwest, instead of moving all the arches who are already flooded. Yeah, they are not there yet, or not, so they come back into the district, then to Southwest, the arches alone. And then your real issue with transportation, when you go to parents, is I have two scenarios. One would be, you guys have a single point of location for all parents to drive your kids to a bus stop, so that also not moving in and out of the area, the Harris Creek Trail, Dawson Cabin Road, things like that. If one point of failure, then, you know, you're picking up three kids at one bus stop, but all parents go in either, or you have the parents driving kids. But I don't think it's fair to allow kids with a pressure home already plugged into work and then access the program, things like that. And then four parents who spent quite a good money doing, like, you would need to raise a year or nine years here to get out of DC, and they're probably going to be in this school later. I haven't been to my house two years yet.
So I want to make sure I understand you, just that it's, you're looking, what you would like to see is the people that are here, established in Dixon, go to Dixon High School or are supposed to go to Dixon High School, remain where they are. And when we have these new neighborhoods that are cropping up, they should be the ones, as we move along, that are being redistricted to Southwest.
Sure. And for, if there's enough school for it here, I'll say it's paying off. Two young people, you go wherever, you go two, three stories, you go all the way there. You get temporary facilities, you drive into the spot, or done, you move.
Well, and new construction is certainly something that we know.
It's gonna happen.
Absolutely, it is. There's no doubt about that.
And I don't feel that, like, just what they need to sort of survive, like, that's more important, not to, than, don't let them like do.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My daughter, my baby, she's a daughter. She's established here. She's really passionate about her, she's running a nonprofit, so, and we're right on Dawson Cabin, so when we go to Maryup Two, then she comes along, and I'm providing her hat, and I don't know what we're doing to that, or to the others that are established. And we talked about the redistricting, like, down the road from the path I began, that it's part, two young daughters are going to go south of the elementary school, and they're going to do their fixing, and then they drive to Southwest, or another.
Well, we certainly would hope we don't have to do this again. You know, we look at construction. I mean, we talk about where we need to build, where we need to look for new schools, where we need to look to expand our schools. And, you know, there's a reason that we've built four schools in the past few years, and two of them are right here in the Holly Ridge area. We built the new middle school and Coastal Elementary School.
So I feel like there's plenty of middle school and elementary school all over.
That's a fair point. We kind of got our hands tied on that a little bit. And not, no, no, but it's a good question, and it's a question I'm sure a lot of people wonder, because Dixon High School's been sitting here, it's been getting more crowded. Why have you been building elementary schools instead of doing something about this? It's a fair point. A few years ago, the North Carolina legislators passed something called HB90, and what it did was it limited class sizes in K-3. Said you can only have this many students in a K-3 classroom. And not arguing whether or not that, I mean, that's, yes, everyone's, yes, we need smaller classrooms at elementary. But what it effectively did was take about 2,000 seats away from us, so, in the elementary school level. So we had to address that, because we had these legal limitations, statutory limitations, that we had to get addressed as quickly as possible. And that's kind of why the elementary schools took a little bit of precedence.
So I would like to agree, I mean, kids are here established here, you're, I mean, already there. No stay as well?
Right, but you're assuming there will be a junior?
Yeah, I mean, you know, here specifically, I'm not seeing a lot of adults, but people are personally going to this year, from what I've heard. So, I mean, I think also that their schools should just be expanded, not be involved in anything that's not necessary.
And expanding Dixon Middle, High School is something we're looking at. It is. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, my, I'm trying to figure about, there's always a scene of a whole new sophomore. So in this scenario, he's fine, he stays in Dixon, should he send Southwest high schools to different schools?
That's a good question. It's actually, I've seen that, so we've done, you know, when we've had to do redistricting before, that's actually been done in two separate ways. There has been redistricting where it was, your senior can stay, that's your choice, but your younger one has to go where they're supposed to go. I've also, it's also been done where you have that legacy, that your senior's here, we're not going to split the family, as long as you have, like, one person in the chain, they can stay where they are. It's been done both ways. I can't tell you what it's going to be this time, but I do, I can tell you, it has been done both ways. Yes, ma'am?
So I consider a big military community here, the housing and military families. This is my daughter's seventh school, sixth, combined, a little, I have a shift at this year. Are you all, any to make any consideration on your military families, because my daughter's a freshman this year, so a junior, which is a senior, which is not called for at all?
That's a fair question, and it's something for our Board to consider. I can't tell you, yes, we are, or no, we're not. But again, I'm here for feedback, and so something I can share with our Board members is say, we did have some people, or, you know, we had people that were concerned about military moves. Now, I know we have militarily connected folks on our Board that are sympathetic with that, but I can't tell you one way or the other. But that's, that's, that's very good information to know. And it's, like I said when I started, I moved around when I was a kid, so I know how it impacts you, with your changing schools, again. So it's not anything you take lightly, and that's why we want your input.
Yeah, I think, because we, the fact that she, military kids have so much to go for that, so we just have nothing to go around with us. And also, the children have a lot, so kind of regarding some of the military, that I can share with you all, I think, I think, I think, you know, you're on a, like, allowing of classes today, or to, or allowing of people who are already here to finish up school here. I don't know, maybe it's a, a...
It is, and it's something that, you know, we have the email set up, and that's, people have commented on current classes that, I mean, that is something that we could certainly look at. Ma'am?
Yes, I have a quick question, just to add some more contact from our understanding.
Sure.
So the high schools over capacity, what are the implications of that? Like, are there safety concerns? Are the classrooms too full? Do you have the staff, teachers? Like, what else is going on, going with the fact that there's so many kids?
That is, there are so many kids. So when you talk about, there are so many other factors, you know, first off, and most, we're educators, so what's educationally most sound for students? And sitting in a class with 35 other students may not be ideal. You know, there could be programs that Mr. Eman wants to bring in but can't, because he simply doesn't have the space to put those. And I can't say that Mr. Eman has this issue, but I know there are schools, they have teachers on carts, and that's not ideal. You also have to consider, then, other capacities. The cafeteria, you know, there's kids that they eat in hallways, because there's not room in the cafeteria. Issues like that come up with, and yes, it can be a safety issue.
Is that, you said third class, is that about the class sizes?
I just threw that number out there. I mean, it's going to vary class to class.
Right, because I think just knowing that kind of information is also helpful to us. I'm saying, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a...
So, I mean, I can tell you, like, 957 students. Where that capacity comes from is you figure 26 students per class plus, plus 50 per kid, per teacher in the gymnasium, and that's how we come up with that number, about the school's capacity. So you figure for a high school, 26, 27 students in a classroom is ideal, and you have almost, you know, 1,500 kids, you can't really maintain that. And it does limit the programs you can provide to your students.
Is the high school fully staffed, do you have a teacher or is it like...
No, Mr. Eman says no, we're all good.
I could, I could speak to something.
Okay.
I mean, our class size are normal class size, but I have absolutely no, I don't have an empty room on campus, you know, except for the media center. And so, we are, we're full right now. And so, we are, the district is, is bringing in some temporary units for next school year, which we're very thankful for. But the facilities...
The bathrooms.
Bathrooms, cafeteria, this is the auditorium, you know what I mean? And it's also the band room, because when you have 100 kids in your band, this is where you practice at the end, where you have performances, you know? And so, the facilities are small for the size of the population of school. So we do not have 30 kids on average in any classes, you know what I mean? Our numbers per, per class size are, are just as good as anybody else's, you know what I mean? And we are not, and we're fully staffed, you know, and we expect to be that next year. But if I was at 1150 this year, and I'm at 1230 or 1240 next year, and then, you know, that's the, that's the challenge of, of a continued larger and larger student population. When we know we are full now, and we keep getting more and more full, and certain spaces that are built for 900 kids, that aren't built for 1200 kids. So, yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Eman. Yes, ma'am?
I wish our principal was here. I'm from Southwest High School.
That is, that is.
Huh?
No, she said she's from Southwest High School.
Yeah, I wish that our principal was here to speak, because we do have over 40 kids per class. We do have issues with, and that's why I'm like, this is crazy, that they're saying, I just went to my daughter's freshman orientation, was told at Southwest High School, we don't have any room for any students. I have a senior who slips in the library to have class, like a virtual class, because we don't have any staffing. So, so like, I'm sitting here, listening to this, and I'm probably the only parent from Southwest here, and I'm frustrated, because now you're telling me all these extra kids are going to come into our school, and we don't have the facility, we don't have the cafeteria for our students. We don't have the classrooms for our students, because we don't have the teachers for our students. So what we're doing is, when you have a guest come over and you sweep it all under the rug, like, we need to pull that dirt out of the rug at this point, and we need to say, the larger issue is, as you addressed earlier, the elementary schools, they have a class size. Middle schools and high schools in North Carolina, correct me if I'm wrong, do not have a class size they have to meet.
Thank you, ma'am.
Why are we not building another school? Why are we not, in Southwest, there are now four elementary schools that are going to feed into our already overpopulated high school. So now we're going to bring other, we're going to redistrict, and we're going to come into a mess in about five, six years, to where we're going to send all these kids back, because we can't house the students we currently have in Southwest. And it really doesn't make sense, and I'm trying to figure out why that was the solution, why redistricting was the answer that anybody came up with.
Well, you know, I can't, that's a fair question. I can't speak to the staffing right now at Southwest High School. What I can tell you is, I know what their population says, and I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But what I can tell you is, when you look at the raw numbers, I can tell you how many students right now are registered in that school compared to how much room they have.
Can you tell me how many staff they have per student as compared to Dixon?
I cannot write you that, ma'am, but I can certainly find that out.
And what division is this school? This is a 3A?
Yes, ma'am.
We're 2A?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's that going to do to everything?
That's a good question.
Because our divisions go by population.
By population.
So is it going to reduce Dixon? Is they no, are they going to go to 1, 2A, and then we're going to be 3A? I mean, how does that work in the scheme of things? Because athletics matter, too.
They do.
Because that's what pays for most of the stuff that you have. These facilities are awesome. I wish we had these facilities to be able to have class and concerts and everything in ours. But for our wrestling team, we use a classroom that we split with the football team's equipment. For our other, and, and so that's why I'm super frustrated. I have a senior and I have a freshman. And so for me to have my senior sit in the hallway, that we just discussed, we don't want our kids sitting in the hallway, that's where he's got his virtual classroom, and he has to get kicked out of the library because they have a staff meeting. I live three miles from the school, but according to Aqua County, he can't come home to do his virtual class. So then he's got to take off of work, because he missed his school opportunity, because there's nowhere for my child to be. So now we're going to put more students and filter more students and make them drive. Let's talk about how that's going to cost. A building is financially stable, but that gas money can never be recouped. So we're going to put these kids on a bus and expect them to lose out on their day activities? Because you want to shuttle in from one to the other? I mean, that's a pretty long way, on some pretty dangerous highway. So let's talk about our high schoolers that are now going to be commuting back and forth. It doesn't, it really doesn't make sense to me, and I'm just hoping somebody can explain. Sorry, guys.
No, you're fine.
Have you guys thought about, when I was growing up, did you get, so it was kind of college?
Well, we did that, too, around my school. Yeah. And so, we would do it, like, Monday, Thursday, Wednesday, whatever, then you come into the classroom. So, you may have capability now, where you can log in, and you can have all the teachers which I prefer, and then I can look at how construction is going to be.
There, there are laws about how many days we can do virtually.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is, you can have, see, every group is doing school side of the week, it's just that half of the students on their day, or he, would be doing virtual...
That's it, but I'm saying there's laws, and we can only have, I think it's five virtual days a year. They've passed that law. We can't, I understand what you're saying? Like, what we, you're talking about, like, when we came back in 2021, they passed laws since then that have limited the number of virtual days we can actually allow, count as school days.
Okay. I'm just saying, like, there's other options that we can do, because, I mean, obviously, kids sitting in the hallway, if people want to do a class, especially with school shooting. I have a vision that I would want that. So I think that, in general, unless you're looking at infrastructure, you're talking police force, hospitals, anything like that, just talk on the neighborhood, that's absolutely not, and you don't even have grocery stores. I get it, I'm coming from city, like, I'm just going to walk to the grocery store, whatever. But we moved out there for a different lifestyle. I just didn't, I guess, anticipate that we would be building homes for people to live in, and then everyone would be sharing aggregate estate that was available.
This area is growing exponentially.
Which is, I was thinking, the...
And, you know, for those people that have been in Dixon a long time, they know it wasn't that long ago, when Dixon High School was a little 1A school, and 957 was more than enough. So, I mean, that, that growth, it is a challenge. It's a challenge for everybody, but it's a great problem to have, that this community is growing, its economy is growing, it's just we have to be able to keep up.
So what do you have, what is your power to stop the growth of spark, of neighborhood of, of, during the day?
Oh, I don't have that authority.
Right, but who you need, like, who can utilize the school force, where we need to go, to say, what do you need?
Talking about zoning for communities would be the county commissioners.
Okay, because I think, in general, if you want to build a, you could, on, you could go to school first. School should be go first.
Well, that happens. I mean, you know, if you go Clearview, we just built it, Richlands, there are already clear land, you know?
Rich is huge.
Yeah, stateside elementary school, that, that's already surrounded by houses, and we built that one not too long ago, so it happens fast. If you build it, they come. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so say, this scenario that we want doesn't happen.
Okay.
And you guys, you know, the population goes down, and you're able to pull in these things you want to pull in for the school, because there'll be room for these classes or activity, or whatever, extra for trying kids. I know now, within the county, if you go to one school, but there's a, a certain subject
I know now within the county, if you go to one school, but there's a, a certain subject or something happening at another school that's offered at another school that's not in your district, you can go there because of that.
Yes, ma'am. It's called controlled enrollment.
So what happens when, that happens here and then we get moved to Southwest and I'm like, no, I want to go there. Are we back to square one where everyone wants to come back here because they have?
Controlled enrollment, that's a good, controlled enrollment is, you know, like, I'll give you, one of our most popular ones is ROTC at Northside High School. Um, that's our most pop, that's our most popular controlled enrollment. People from all over the county go to the ROTC, go to Northside to go ROTC. It's all dependent on how much room they have in the program. So if there's a specific controlled enrollment program they have here, Mr. Rehman, what control, do you have a controlled enrollment program here?
Um, I mean, we have Marine Off, you pay some classes, but I don't know, we haven't really got a lot of controlled enrollment applications for that. So I think we're going to have Marine Off classes and ROTC.
So those controlled enrollment applications are highly dependent on how much room they actually have in the program. So it's not a guarantee that you want to come here for this program and you get to go. It is dependent on how much room. Yes, ma'am?
Going off of that, I'm just giving my question. So since we're talking about capacity issue, is it, or are we pretty much looking at, because this one wants to be in that program? And would not, would be issued for that year or so?
And, and again, it really is dependent on that program. So we have.
Over the eyes and I'm not just asking if it's.
Sure.
Because it's a capacity issue.
It is.
If it could just maybe that it's not, just not going to be an option.
No, ma'am, that's not, so we have not a capacity school, but they have that program. Northside doesn't have a lot of room for students to go out of district to Northside. But we do have a certain number of spots set aside specifically for that program. So say it's seventy or whatever, and if we have fifty, even though we're not taking general out of district, we are taking controlled enrollment. Yes, ma'am?
So my question now regarding the human factor, when you talked about the members of the facility and we looked at this, looking at that, having asked what's best for the students, right? Because I feel like if that's our priority and that's our very first and only question, we can work around what's best for the students. And I think most of us agree that that's not redistricting. So if it's not redistricting, then what is the best option and how do we make that happen full stop? Because it's, I mean, to be honest, I also just like many parents here, chose the neighborhood, I chose the where it is and the school that it's going to. And one of these options would make that all permanent, um, which obviously is frustrating, right? So if we're only talking about the human factor, just focusing on the students, what's best? I went to a local credit high school in Jersey. What they did up there, which was probably not the best option, but it was different, was we created different schedules. We had a zero period. So I was going to school very early in the morning, um, as a senior because it helped with that capacity issue. Early in the mornings when seniors, you know, are taking their classes, obviously there's government there on the hallway. You leave school earlier, you know, when you're freshmen, sophomore, juniors, whatever, still finishing their day. That's what we did there. I'm sure we have other options. I don't know, like, either of these scenarios, um, I mean, I'm not heard, raise your hand if you like what he's. No, it's very. So I, I just feel like, you know, you said the board may not decide on any of these.
It's possible.
And so, and then, like, are we, do we come back here as parents to, I don't know, talk about our feelings and say, what about this? What about that? Like, what, what's next? What else? Because I would just think both of these scenarios are, are not big, especially after hearing what's going on in Southwest High School. It's like, did anybody check with them? Does anybody go into the hallways and seeing it, does anybody talk to our kids, you know, and I just.
Agree.
Option three, what is it?
These, these are, they're difficult decisions that have to be made. I, I have no other thing to tell you. I, I, yes, we always want to do what's best for kids. And we know that moving kids around is disruptive, it's difficult. But sometimes we don't have much choice. We simply, like Ms. Rehman said, the facilities are no longer adequate for what we have. And we have buildings here that are not ADA compliant because they were built so long ago. And that's not acceptable for these kids either. So, and we want to build new schools, but it costs a lot of money. And it's hard to convince those people who are going to give us the money or give the county the money to do that when we have space over here, and I understand what you're saying about that. I'm just talking about the raw numbers that I would be sharing with them. Well, what, what do you mean? You want a hundred million dollars for a new high school when you've got room for three hundred kids over here?
Well, I actually can talk to, because I bought my house a year ago and my tax revenue is forty-five percent, so we use that.
So that's a good question. So, um, they don't actually use local tax money to pay for those schools, they go and borrow money. They don't have, so we're building a new elementary school, I just took this out, it's forty-two million dollars total. It's going to be, they don't have that money in the kitty, they actually have to go do that and then the tax money will help pay for that. Basically like a mortgage payment.
We're not asking the parents to jump on the road. Maybe there are parents that do want to, because it's just easier for them to get all their kids in the area and to run the job, and it means that.
And there are going to be some parents like that. You're going to have a lot of parents up, you know, if this is the scenario, the chosen are going, that are up here going, well, yeah, I've been staying all along before, so it's Southwest High School. So we are going to have parents that are going to be like, okay, fine. But there are going to be scenarios, there are going to be, we're not going to be able to come up with a solution that's going to be satisfactory for every single person. We're just not going to be able to do that. Yes, ma'am?
I think a way to make a situation satisfactory for most people. Because you are going to pay option one and option two, but that obviously changes then the transportation lines or everything. I think if you did offer a legacy of a grandfather clause for all students currently enrolled in the school. So whether they're a freshman, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or whether they're a junior or what happens. Like, if the parents choose, and I understand, I'm going to lose the bus, like, that, that's on me. So, but if the parents choose to drive their kids until they've completed their time in the school that they're in, then you should have that option for the students and the human side of not making the kids move their course to their school, their actual privilege, their friends and all the things they've established.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd like to see that timeline pushed to twenty-five, twenty-six?
No, I'm okay with, I mean, I'm sure, I'm saying, any student.
Any student who's currently.
Any student who is currently enrolled in Dixon High School, if they can get their bus here and out, riding it on a bus, whether it's their own vehicle or if their parents drive them before they turn sixteen, they should have the option to finish out where they currently go to school regardless because this problem can get kicked down, can be kicked down the road to let these kids that are already established, like her senior or freshman, be able to finish. I'm not going to have a freshman that's coming here for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, or for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So when this happens, it's going to be a sophomore. So you will have spent his first year going to school in one school and then you have to change. For his brother's seniors, he's a graduate from here. I'm like, well, my kids are driving to the same place, like, choose my home because of where it is. So if it's on me to drive him, if that's my inconvenience, then I will take that upon myself. But I think that grandfathering and legacy should be across the board for any kid that's already here regardless.
Okay, thank you very much, trans.
I would like to add to that, that I think I should apply to those schools to do the same. I say, districts get to do it right now, we pick up homes for that reason, it's like going else. And they have established relationships because they have hostile siblings in high school, right? They're already established with coaches and whatever in high school, they already have a relationship, relationship with them. Like, you know, right, so if you grandfather anyone who's in the current district, you give them the option, okay, go to Southwest because yours is in this district now, or you can leave yourself to Dixon. And if anyone newly moves into the areas, that's another issue.
You're here. I just have a lot of parents who don't care. They're going to stay out, like, if they're on the bus, I, that's just easier for me and it's not. But the parents still do care and have the option.
And when you got a ride share, do you like, I'll drive? They're not considered.
I love that idea. I think that idea has happened. All six of them are considered, and I'm sure I'll be able to finish up this year. And this doesn't apply to me, so I won't say that my daughter will be a junior, she is an older junior or could be, so she can drive them away. I do think that it would be maybe beneficial for the human factor for you all to consider, because it would still be the bus. Because while I am privileged and I can take my daughter to pick her up and I do all of that, she's paying for it. So I mean, your mother would be picking her up right now. There are kids who should have the same opportunity to finish up this year here and the bus and not be limited because of parents or, or, you know, maybe there's old mill and they've got something else on or, you know, I don't know. That can still work and then maybe also still offer for those who would be in the rotation, have to finish up this year.
I understand. The challenge are bus drivers. You know, having enough bus drivers to do that would be, and having enough buses, that would be extremely challenging because you're talking about busing people between districts then. And that, that does become a significant logistical, close to impossibility. We're already down seventy bus drivers. So that would be extremely difficult. Not to, I, I'm not here to knock down anybody's idea, but I just, I want you to know the reality is we probably don't have the personnel to do that.
Yeah, I have a question related to that. I know, but see, I'm just going to talk to my own daughter, but it's something I think we need on a bus. So, kind of question, how are we, why are not those on the bus?
High school kids, that's, that's been for a long time. I mean, I was AP at a high school fifteen years ago. They ride with friends, they ride, parents drive them, they drive themselves, so they don't ride, they're not as crowded as middle school, high, elementary school buses. I mean, that's just, it's always been.
So then why would that be real, just genuinely?
Because we still have to drive those routes.
And they still have to drive.
Yeah, we still have to drive those, those same routes, so there, we'll still have the same number of buses. You know, then you start getting into, we have drivers running extremely long routes at that point and.
But what about if they go to a location that they're.
Like a hub bus?
Without any circulation.
Yeah, I do need.
They already use the school bus.
Yeah.
It's speech to, to that same thing where you won't, you have people that use that school bus because they have no other way for their kids to get to school. They don't necessarily have the means to get them to a hub either.
Well, give us, what is it, very free to get right, like, I always drive my bike to my friend's house to give them one of those. Maybe we have a lot of those bus drivers.
What is that current regulation on how close the bus stops that you need for a kid to walk their bus? I can tell that's a little, that's a lot of the street, if you did walk it, five, ten blocks.
It, it depends, it depends on the road for one. Like, our buses can't go down not state maintained roads. So you might be able to stop, you know, you see these buses stopping every four houses, but then you'll have a bunch of kids standing somewhere. If that's not a state maintained road, our buses can't go down. So that's, that's a big driving force.
I think if you speed up through those bus routes, if you, if you're within a certain radius of a bus stop, like, one of those avenues, because we have a bus that stops on our neighborhood like three times and we've been a half mile each other. That wouldn't work with the bus stop, obviously, on a bus stop, right? It's really dangerous ones.
Yeah.
The bus probably shouldn't stop on the other end.
Yeah, sounds good.
But if you're in it, if you're within whatever reasonable distance is determined, like, I think if you walk, if you walk in the hallway, you have to make the buses run quicker, stop them multiple times.
And I do go to the ground, we go to the street for me, but I, and I, I know I have to cross the road, sit in the car. So that it's not for us to do. Like, I think, I think parents are willing to work with you guys in any way as long as you start building them.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you have a question?
I don't have any question. If they were a freshman, if you were still finishing up, could have changed, or you're saying that?
Not currently, but now what I'm hearing from the group here as a consensus is that that is something that this, that you would like to see, that anyone currently registered here or having a sibling here and they'll be here at the same time would be grandfathered in and kind of that legacy, that chain.
So what about, I have, I have a freshman, because that's their fourth year, I want them all to be. I have a bunch of my freshmen to go here and the others to drive their, to school.
Right.
So I do have a question about your scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, I prefer the one where my home is in the district.
Sure, I'll just put this one.
Area one. However, my question up here at two, if you have a damn bus, it has. Are you saying people on one side of the street are getting picked up by a bus and people of Russell Street coming in are not picked up by a bus?
Yes, that, that happens quite a bit, like Gum Ranch Road, we'll have buses that pick up on one side and go to one school and back up to the other side.
I have a player. I would say I would like.
That's one of those things where the line has to go somewhere, you know?
Assuming that the population lived in Southwest, it'd be really minimal next year?
So, um, yes, not minimal, but not nearly as explosive as it is right here. So we have ten-year projections, and they are projections. Um, we've worked with NC State for a long time with this and they've been surprisingly, they've been very accurate. And Southwest is not predicted to grow like it is down here.
Also, I want to share, you said, that doesn't grow, and then next year it'll be a neighborhood for them.
It is. Um, I can tell you, you know, a lot of people are moving north out of Wilmington. And, um, a few years ago, when the Marine Corps announced that Marsoc was headed this way, I mean, that was, you know, a lot of people didn't really see that coming at first. Um, when they re, when they did that redeployment, that really, that really pumped up this area quite a bit. Yes, ma'am?
So just another crazy scenario, Onkel County has this amazing school, the Skill Center. Has that been taken into consideration since it's literally two miles from Southwest High School? The students that go to the Skill Center should attend Southwest High School to fill whatever gaps they can.
The Skill Center takes students from all over the county. There, there are students that they have, have specific programs, auto body, um, fire school, culinary arts. Those are specific programs, um, like a vocational high school almost, where they'll go for half a day for those specific programs. So it's not just the Skill Center, we have a district for the Skill Center. Students from all over the county, from Camp Lejeune, students from, from neighboring counties, it's a regional center, could go there as well.
Right, I understand how it works because my student went to two classes in the morning at the.
Yes, exactly.
Back to Southwest High School in the afternoon. I was just talking about for the busing issue Onkel County currently has to fix that void. So we're not driving Skill Center students all the way back to Richlands and they miss an hour of curriculum or all the way back to Swan's Row and they miss an hour of curriculum. If you decide to attend the Skill Center as a high schooler, maybe you should have to go to Southwest High School to finish out your day so you're not missing that large gap.
So the reason why that can't happen is that all the CTE programs have prerequisite classes that feed into the Skill Center. So for instance, Dixon is the only one that has Construction Core that then allows you to go to the Skill Center for H-bath. Southwest is the only one that has the Fire Science, that they have to complete their CTE faculties in order to go to the firefighting school there. So if Southwest did that, then they'd have to have all the pre-rep classes at Southwest and there wouldn't be enough room for that.
Ma'am?
So I agree with the, the part that you're already here, have a grandfather here to finish out. Um, but like her scenario, she's got her senior and she's got her freshman. Are we able to do like out of district request for whether it was a family or a work scenario? Because my daughter goes here, I have, I work in Snee's Ferry and my elementary school child, I have to do a out of district request every year because I work on that side. So we don't go to Southwest, she goes to Dixon Elementary. So we do out of district requests?
Out of district requests are typically not, um, able to be accommodated when you have a school that is overcapacity.
But they did that in Southwestern Elementary.
So when you have, there, I said typically we can't, but there are hardship issues. You know, look, I, I work two jobs, my daycare is here, we, we, we're sympathetic to that. So you'll have those scenarios where in most cases, no, we can't. But there are issues where, you know, it may not be accepted, but the board can say, well, no, we understand this and so we're going to accept you, to allow you to do that. And also, if you have a kid that's been going to Dixon Elementary, even though it's now overcapacity, because you've been there, we don't want to just, as long as you, you continue to qualify, you should remain here.
Because right now for the elementary school, I have to go right here and then we get to Dixon Middle and now we're in this district. And then now we're in this district for the high school, for Dixon High. But now if something like this happens, probably going to continue with this out of district request all the way up to that.
If there is, you know, Dixon Middle School, I think, can accommodate out of district right now. But if there is some kind of significant hardship, then that is something that's considered in the out of district process.
But we wouldn't have a common middle school, but how?
Potentially not, no, not right now. I mean, I can't tell you what's going to happen, you know, two years from now. I don't know the, the projection numbers, you know, right here, but as a. But as of right now, Dixon Middle School is not in capacity.
But the high school, we could still do an out-of-district request.
You could, I mean, anyone is free to make that request, I can't tell you whether or not that request would be honored. Yes, ma'am?
So this is probably just something that we're relatively in the room, but I'm hoping you know. So Representative Shepard had to put a bill.
Yes, she has.
Up to the state.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that bill is no longer on the table, has been like moved?
No, I mean, it's still moving through, but we are continuing with our process. So it's a bill, so Phil Shepard has put forward a bill that has said that that students should go to the school that they are geographically closest to. If, and here's kind of the caveat with all of that, is that if that school has capacity to do so. So, but what also is not described in there is geographically. So you're talking about as a crow flies, or as I can drive there, it's not really defined in that. So it's not, in this circle, I go here, but, you know, like, some of these, when you look at why we draw these lines sometimes, sometimes it's where the bus ride is. And that, even though, you know, currently here's Dixon, and here somewhere, it's a much quicker ride straight down 17 to Dixon High School than it would be to wind through all those neighborhoods and get up to Southwest High School. That's something we take in consideration when we're drawing these lines.
So the verbiage for section two, which is the legacy and grandfather, is literally perfect. So I hope my problem would be use of verbiage from section two of the bill, with the ego scenario.
Okay, thank you. Seems like, oh, well, thank you very much for coming this evening, again. All this is very important, and I promise, all of it will be shared with the people that are going to make these decisions. I kind of hear, yes, ma'am?
Okay, back to the money, the food supplies, like?
Ultimately, it'll be the Board of Education.
The Board of Ed, they're the ones who say, yes, we have a high school, so today, at least, where the money's coming from.
I'm not sure, no, wait, say that again.
The money to build a high school, right?
That's a collaborative effort, but as far as, I mean, you know, we work together with the county on that.
With you?
The county, the county commissioners, yes.
I was just trying to see, is the box, so the county, the Board of Ed?
Yes, ma'am.
Who else is moving the money?
Well, that's it, those are the two.
The county and Board of Ed.
Yes, ma'am.
So they just, so they know you have this issue.
So here's, they work collaboratively, but ultimately, the statute says the county is responsible for building schools. So we work collaboratively as far as where we need to build those schools, when we need to build those schools, it's a collaborative effort. As far as getting the money to build those schools, that is the county, the county is statutorily required to do that.
Do they provide a firm on sale of the office or whatever?
Well, they, yes, the county makes, well, as long as it's in the county, not in the city, but yes, they, the zoning and all of that, yes, they do all that. Exactly. Well, depending on the questions, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
She's a bit hard question. The votes in June, right?
Uh, yes, the vote on this will be the, we have two meetings in June, and it'll be the second meeting, I think that's the 27th, but don't. Oh, it's a public meeting, absolutely. Okay. Yes, ma'am? It's being recorded. It's being recorded specifically for that reason. But I, but I mean, like I said, I think the big thing I've heard, make sure that, is that what you want to see is that people are here, stay here and keep that legacy. If they had someone here, they're able to stay here.
The problem with it, because theories of, these are crushable children, the buckles, not the dogs, that's 25 years old. Their reasoning skills are not there, they are very emotional, sexually, they're kind of a crap.
Yes, ma'am?
And it's conflict, back and forth, including them, or treating them, they have a schedule, they're, it's like a life altering. So I think if someone has the issue in elementary, with the, you know, with the math, the math is done, but he doesn't call it that, it's like, I mean, high school, or maybe Southwest, I don't want it.
That's why I was like, you're a grandfather.
Not required, and it's not required, I don't want to do the required thing.
All, all the similarities in this really should be, let me think, the back part, it should be really, no, so, elementary.
But we have a lot of nice.
Yes, ma'am?
Target, do you mean, is it possible to send out surveys to all the possibly affected families? So if you have a count of how many people, will you just, if they're annoying?
So there is, there is a email address. It's DHSredistricting@onslow.k12.nc.us. And anyone that wants to submit additional feedback, that would be the place to do that. And this is all, it's on the district website, we have it, it'll come up, it's all there, absolutely. It's right on the front page, so you can click right on it. Yes, ma'am?
Why hasn't this been considered near Jacksonville High School? They have a very small campus with a bunch of trailers.
Well, we are very small in the United States.
But, I mean, Jacksonville High School actually has been this permanent structure that has been there for many, many years, so everybody stays in the same area.
Dix, Jacksonville High, Jacksonville High School has been redistricted a number of times.
A number of times, yes, but to, they're also inside of a neighborhood, northwest.
They are, they're a neighborhood school.
But in order to reach their capacity and to be able to surface all the students that they have, and several trailers, and we're bringing them in, so that that's temporary.
They are temporary.
Okay.
They're not, you know, and we do have some, you'll notice, some of them are permanent, more permanent than others. There's ones that were bought by the federal government that are permanent, they're generally at elementary schools. Had start buys, and they have to stay where they are, but all of ours, they're mobile units, they're meant to be temporary solutions to problems.
So even at Jacksonville High School, they're meant to be temporary?
Now, some of them stay a long time, I can tell you because.
One year.
In the city, we are very limited, and once we move one out, they won't let us move one back. So we keep them there, because once it's gone, it's gone. They have, they have a lot of different zoning rules than they do here in the county, so that's why we don't move them. You'll notice at Carolina Forest, a lot of our city schools have those trailers, that even if we're not using them, which I'm not saying we're not, but even if we're not, we keep them there, because if we move them, we can't move them back, and we might need them. That's in a different county. That's not our district. Thank you all very much for coming, I really appreciate all your input, and it will be shared, I promise, and please come to the board meeting on this one.